All right. I call this special meeting to order. All the representatives of the Commission are present. I'm Lieutenant Governor Aleni Kralakis, joined in person today by State Controller Malia Cohen. And we are also joined by Michelle Perot, representing the Department of Finance.
Madam Chair, we have a forum present. In addition, I would like to identify members of the staff of the Commission participating virtually for this hybrid meeting. We have our speaker coordinator Jeff Clubnick and meeting liaison Kim Lina.
For the benefit of those in the audience, the State Lands Commission manages state property interests in over five million acres of land, including mineral interests. The Commission also has a responsibility for the prevention of oil spills at marine oil terminals and offshore oil platforms and islands, and for preventing the introduction of marine invasive species into California's marine waters. I'd also like to take a moment to honor the California Native American communities all across the state for persisting, carrying on diverse cultural and linguistic traditions, and sustainably managing the land that we now share. Native people have maintained a constant presence on the landscape for many thousands of years, and they are essential stewardship partners, whether along the coast, along our rivers, valleys, or in our fragile deserts. We thank California Native American communities for participating in this Commission's activities and for their essential role in maintaining and adding to our state's rich cultural. Ms. Cato, could you please lay out what will happen during today's?
Thank you, Chair. The meeting today will consist of public comment and two items the Commission will meet on in closed session. There will be no actions taken by the Commission at the meeting today. We will have one public comment period at the end of the meeting. Prior to public comment, we'll be holding closed session. The closed session will involve discussions related to litigation and to conference with real property negotiators. Prior to adjourning into closed session, we will have time for interested parties to comment on either of the items, Orman Beach Generating Station Lease Amendment, or the assignment of the four leases from ExxonMobil to Sable Offshore Corporation. Following closed session, we will move into our general public comment session.
Okay. The next order of business will be the regular calendar. Item one pertains to an application for a lease for the Orman Beach Generating Station in Oxnard. There is no staff presentation or action to be taken for this item, but we will hear public comments. We would like to keep public comments on this item down to one minute per speaker. However, we will also allow anyone who would like to continue to speak or provide a longer comment to do so during the general public comment period following the closed session. Jeff, do we have any public comments for item one?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we do. Our first commenter for item one is David El Caskey. David, if you'd please unmute yourself and begin speaking, and then on deck, we have Juan Carlos Villagomez.
David, please proceed.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Okay, my statement is three minutes. Could I do the whole thing now?
If we could limit it to just the one minute at this point, we really need to have the opportunity to go into closed session, but after closed session, we will be able to take additional public comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
These are scary times. Legitimacy of the state, including this Commission, is currently under assault from a president and his followers who say California has no right to protect its people or its environment if they're against him. Six months ago, I would have seen approval of this lease extension as another regrettable instance of being overly cautious and risk averse, even when evidence and public interest seems so much to the contrary. Now, I see it as an act of capitulation and obedience to a hostile and dangerous federal government. The consent of the governed is a principle of the Declaration of Independence and Constitution. You have a responsibility to preserve and protect the innate rights of California's citizens and their environment. You may not succeed. You may be sued. The Supreme Court may affirm the power of an authoritarian government. "The First Lesson in Tyranny" by Timothy Snyder is "Do Not Obey in Advance." Most of the power of authoritarianism is freely given. Individuals or those acting on behalf, like you, think ahead about what a more repressive government will want than offer themselves without being asked. The lesson applies here. I urge you to deny this lease extension while you still can. And I have do the rest of the public comment.
Thank you very much. Jeff, next speaker, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next speaker is Juan Carlos Villagomez. You're welcome to unmute yourself, and then on deck, we have Odette Moran.
Hello, CSLC. My name is Juan Carlos Villagomez. I'm seventeen years old. I go to Wainimi High School, and I'm here with CAUZ. I'm here also before you today to speak on the topic for the lease for the OBGS conduits. As a resident of Oxnard, I could tell you that the beach is a great staple of our community, is a vital place for our citizens. So it was a hard thing to hear that the Orman Beach is under threat from the Orman Beach Generation Station, more specifically its conduits. The conduits are a big factor in the power plant's outdated technology. They suck in water from the ocean to cool down the steam produced during electricity generation. But with that, they suck in mass amounts of marine life, killing them when it happens, harming and killing off a large portion of an already fragile ecosystem each time it's turned on, all to potentially generate power in emergencies to other cities like Camarillo and Thousand Oaks, not even our own. But it doesn't end there. The conduits also discharge the water after it's used, but now at high temperatures with kills and harms in even more marine life due to the thermal stress. All of this on an already heavily polluted and damaged ecosystem in a community that already faces so much environmental racism. I ask of you, the CSLC, to change this, to take control of the future for the lease and reject the lease and make this his final decision now here in Oxnard to save us from this hell. Please, CSLC, make the final decision now and reject that lease. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jeff, next speaker, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next speaker is Odette Moran, who will be followed by Eduardo Ortiz. Odette, you are welcome to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Odette Moran, and I'm a youth organizer with CAUZ and a longtime resident of the Port Wainimi, Oxnard area. First, I want to thank Matthew Dumlow for coming to Oxnard and taking a tour of her neighborhoods during these unprecedented times. And today, more than ever, I've never felt the meaning of unprecedented times as strongly as I do today. From ice raids that are war songs and separate families to new bills that allow fossil fuels to continue drilling without sequel processes. I come to you today because today, more than ever, we need strong leaders and bold leaders like you. We need people who stand up for our communities, who will make sure that we will come first. We cannot trust industries. We cannot trust fossil fuels, and we put our trust in you. This is why I'm asking you to reject the lease and come and make your final decision here in Oxnard. Please be those bold leaders we need. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jeff, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Eduardo Ortiz, who is followed by Jocelyn Corona. Eduardo, you're welcome to unmute yourself.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Eduardo Ortiz. I go to Chen Island High School here in Oxnard and have lived here my entire life. Countless times, I have seen the Orman Beach Generation Station, and I've wondered what is it doing there and why. I have recently found out the many problems it causes to our community here in Oxnard. One being the pollution it emits to not only the people living here, but the marine life as well. We are left with many problems from the generation station that isn't even reliable. I'd like to see the CSLC do something about this and the state lands and the state agencies to invest in something that is reliable, including solar panels and wind turbines. I would also like the final decision meeting being hosted here in Oxnard so our community can hear what's happening to our city. This is not my first time speaking on this matter. Our people in our beach continue being harmed and let down by the lack of decisions you don't take. Please realize the harm being caused here at Oxnard. You hold the power on this decision, so please choose us and shut the power plant down. Thank you.
Jeff, next speaker, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next speaker is Jocelyn Corona, followed by Joan Tharp. Jocelyn, you are welcome to speak.
Good evening, California State Lands Commission. My name is Jocelyn Corona. I'm seventeen years old, and I was born and raised here in Oxnard. I'm here to take today to talk about the Orman Beach Power Plant. The beaches here are like second homes to me. They're an important part of my entire community. That's why it's absolutely heartbreaking to watch all the damage being caused by the power plants. The power plant does nothing but kill our marine life, harm our environment, and cause severe health issues. Even if it's only used occasionally, like four times a year, the damage it causes is extremely serious. And it makes it hard for me and others to trust you since the lease keeps getting extended. You, the Commission, have the power to make this community a better place by supporting coastal access and protecting us. When you guys are making a decision, please remember the thousands of people being affected and reject the lease and host a public decision-making meeting here in Oxnard so the community that's being affected is well aware of this is a decision you are making. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jeff, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Joan Tharp, followed by Jessica Vasquez. Joan Tharp, you are welcome to speak.
Joan, please proceed.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thought I had unmuted. All right. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners, and staff. My name is Joan Tharp, a Port Wainimi resident, speaking on behalf of the Surf Rider Foundation Ventura County. Surf Rider's mission is to protect our oceans, waves, and beaches for all people. We oppose ones through cooling systems like OBGS due to their harmful impact on marine ecosystems and human health. Oxnard residents deserve clean air and safe, healthy access to Orman Beach. I urge you to reject the lease for ocean water conduits to ensure the Orman Beach Power Plant does not receive a third extension from other agencies. Rejecting this lease aligns with your environmental justice policy and honors the decades-long fight by South Oxnard residents for environmental health and coastal access. Approving the extension risks losing a rare opportunity to restore Orman Beach, especially under federal pressure weakening state environmental protections. The federal administration has been vocal about its goals, get that funding for clean energy, and pushing the slogan Drill Baby Drill. California must stand firm in defending its coastline and communities. Please reject the amendment to extend lease forty-one ninety-six beyond April twenty twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, next speaker, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next speaker we have signed up is Jessica Vasquez, but I believe she's not on Zoom. But if Jessica, if you're here, if you could please unmute yourself and begin speaking. Okay, not hearing from Jessica. I'm going to go ahead and move on. Jessica, if you are on Zoom, you're welcome to let us know, and we can get to you afterwards. We do have some hands raised in Zoom, so next up is Bill Woodbridge. Bill Woodbridge, you're welcome to unmute yourself at this time.
Hi, Commissioners. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I urge you, as the others have, to not renew or transfer any of the offshore oil and gas drilling and pipeline leases. The one at Orman Beach, those pipelines have got to go, and the ones for Sable. Santa Barbara County's coastline is a critical driver of the local economy through tourists, recreation, commercial, and recreational fishing, and clean every development, all of which are negatively impacted by expanded offshore oil and gas extraction. We don't need any more oil and gas. We already export our oil and gas. This whole process is just an effort to further enrich greedy corporations at the expense of our environment and public. The coastal waters of Santa Barbara County are a national treasure that attract millions of visitors per year for the beach-going, surfing, fishing, driving, and boating. These are essential components of the local economy up and down the coast, as well as treasured staples of life in Santa Barbara County. Please do not renew these leases. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, next speaker, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next speaker we have a hand raised on Zoom is Bill Hickman. Bill, you're welcome to unmute yourself, but we would just like to determine if you are speaking about this agenda item or if your comment should be for the later public comment period.
Yes, hello. It's for this item.
Okay, please proceed.
Thank you. My name is Bill Hickman with the Surf Rider Foundation, and I urge you to reject the lease extension for the Orman Beach Generating Station. Surf Rider has long opposed open ocean intake and once-through cooling because of the environmental impacts on marine life and the coastal ecosystem. And we strongly support the phase-out of open intake system and once-through cooling throughout the state. Beyond that, Oxnard residents have been fighting for an end to the unjust legacy of fossil fuel power plants in their community. I live in Ventura, and I've been to Orman Beach a few times. It's a hidden gem after years of neglect with the potential to be a really special place that everyone can enjoy. Rejecting lease extension is part of that solution, so thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Jeff, next speaker, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next speaker is Elma Del Aguila, and likewise, if you could let us know if you are speaking on this agenda item.
Hi, if you can hear me, it is for this item.
Please proceed.
Hi, my name is Elma Del Aguila. Thank you for, you know, listening and coming out to Oxnard and Port Wainimi and visiting, but as a lifelong resident of Oxnard, I really urge you to protect my community and reject this lease. Time and time again, Oxnard has been a sacrifice zone for pollution, and at the end of the day, this, the water conduits, that is a part of being able to stop this legacy of pollution that's happening. At the end of the day, these, the Orman Beach Generating Station isn't producing enough to warrant the harm that it's causing to my community. I've spoken time and time again with the State Land Commission, the California Environmental Protection Agency, and I will continue to speak out against injustices that are happening here in my community. So please be a leader and stand up for my community and reject this continued atrocity from happening here in my home. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, next speaker, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The last speaker we have with a hand raised is simply labeled iPhone. I can't see your last three, but if you could unmute yourself and speak and let us know if you're talking on this agenda item. Thank you.
There's a hand raised on Zoom. It says iPhone. If that, if you think that might be you. Yes, okay, please proceed. If you could state your name and confirm that you're speaking on the Orman Beach Generating Station issue on item one. Okay, please proceed.
Hello, California State Lands Commission. My name is Jessica Vasquez. I am fifteen years old, and I am from Oxnard, California. I am here today to talk about the Orman Beach Generating Station. This power plant was supposed to be removed in twenty twenty, but no, it didn't. It was extended to twenty twenty-three, and it is still here, and now it is extended to twenty twenty-six. How long do we need to wait to have clean air? How long? I know this power plant is turned on a few times, but it is still contributing to our health outcomes. The worst part is that Oxnard is not being benefited from this power plant. We are only receiving the bad outcomes. We deserve clean air and access to the Orman Beach. You, California State Land Commission, are the people who are in charge of making this important decision, so please do your job. I am here to ask you to please reject the lease amendment and host this final decision here in Oxnard. Our community who is impacted can be engaged during this important meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, were there any other speakers on this comment?
We have no further speakers. No further speakers on this item at this time.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any comments or questions? This item is informational, so no vote is required, and we will move on to item two, which relates to an assignment of four leases for the use of existing offshore oil and gas pipelines associated with the San Tinoz Unit offshore Santa Barbara County. There will be no staff presentation or action to be taken for this item, but we will hear public comments. Jeff, do we have any public comments for item two?
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. We have no speakers for this item.
Okay, Commissioners, do you have any comments or questions for this item at this time? This informational also, this item is also informational, so no vote is required. So the next order of business is closed session. Is there anything staff would like to share before we go into closed session?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Government Code Section one-one-one-two-six subdivision C seven allows a state body to discuss real property negotiations in closed session, provided that before the closed session, the state body in open session identifies the real property concerned and the person or persons with whom the negotiator may negotiate. In accordance with this requirement, I announce that the Commission will conference in closed session with its real property negotiators regarding the following items. Item one addresses an application for the lease for a lease for the use of existing intake and outfall conduits associated with the Orman Beach Generating Station located in Oxnard, Ventura County. The negotiating parties are the State Lands Commission and the Orman Beach Power LLC. Under negotiation are price and terms for lease PRC forty-one ninety-six. Item two addresses four applications for assignment of leases governing the use of existing offshore oil and gas pipelines traversing state waters associated with the Santa Inez Unit in federal waters, including the Elwood Pier, Two Mooring Buoys, offshore Santa Barbara County. Negotiating parties are the State Lands Commission, ExxonMobil, and Sable Offshore Corporation. Under negotiation are price and terms for leases PRC number forty-nine seventy-seven, fifty-five fifteen, sixty-three seventy-one, and seventy-one sixty-three.
Thank you very much. Do any of the Commissioners have any comments or questions? Okay, just a reminder, if anyone spoke earlier but would like to continue to discuss or to provide comments on either of these issues, we will be back into open session as soon as we've concluded closed session, and you can continue your comments at that time up to an additional two minutes during open session and public comment period. And with that, we will now adjourn into closed session. Thank you. I call this meeting back to order. Ms. Cato, is there anything to report for closed session?
Thank you, Chair. Pursuant to Government Code Section one-one-one-two-six subdivision C seven, the Commission met in closed session with its real property negotiators regarding the application for the extension of the lease for the use of existing intake and outfall conduits associated with the Orman Beach Generating Station located in Oxnard, Ventura County. Pursuant to Government Code Section one-one-one-two-six C seven regarding applications for the assignment of four leases governing the use of existing offshore oil and gas pipelines traversing state waters associated with the Santa Inez Unit in federal waters, the Elwood Pier and Two Mooring Buoys offshore of Santa Barbara County. Under negotiation.
All right. Thank you very much. The next item of business will be public comment, but I'd like to turn it back over to Ms. Cato to quickly share some instructions on how we can best participate in this meeting so that it runs smoothly as possible.
Thank you. If you would like to speak during our public comment period, please complete an electronic request to speak. Hopefully, you have already done so. We will take those members of the public who are here in person. We have none at this point, and then hear from members of the public who are participating virtually. Please make sure you have your microphones or phones muted to avoid background noise. That will help us eliminate any feedback that we can get. We will call on individuals who have raised their hands in the order that they are raised, using the name they registered with or the last three digits of their identifying phone number. After you are called on, please unmute yourself so that you may share your comments. Remember, you have a time limit of two minutes to speak on an item. Two minutes. And please keep your comments respectful and focused, or we will mute anyone who fails to follow these guidelines. The Commission has also established an email address to compile meeting public comments for our meetings. That address is CSLC dot commissionmeetings at slc dot ca dot gov. All emails and correspondence that have been received have been shared with our Commissioners prior to the meeting. If we receive any emails during the course of the meeting, they will be shared with our Commissioners and be made available on our website, along with our other public comment emails. Chair Kralakis, that concludes my hybrid meeting instructions. We're ready to move on to public comment.
Thank you very much. So if anyone would like to address the Commission on any matter, not on today's agenda, and if you would like to continue comments from on items one or two that you began at the beginning of this meeting, staff will call on those who are here in person first, and then we will move to those joining us virtually. Jeff, please call in the first person who would like to make public comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have some public commenters signed up. So first on our sign up is Herman Coomans, followed by Samantha McDonald. Herman, if you could please unmute yourself and begin speaking.
Yeah, hi. Good afternoon. Do you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, great. Good afternoon. My name's Herman Coomans, and I'm a mooring holder in Newport Beach, California. I've, I'm a senior. I'm retired on a fixed income. We know the Commission's staff has been working on their review and recommendations for Tideland's management in Newport, and we appreciate their work very much. We appreciate that you put everything on pause just to look this over. Today, we ask that as the Commission and staff work towards their recommendations, this Commission keep in mind that it looks like the city of Newport Beach has breached the granting statute and favored one group of Tideland users while discriminating against another group, the mooring holders, for at least a decade now. We feel that this breach of fiduciary duty needs to be remedied before other significant changes are even considered, such as the city's plan to convert low-cost mooring permits into higher-cost, in fact, high-cost mooring licenses. We also ask that this Commission recognize that the last-minute pivot from evaluating mooring rates in twenty twenty-four, which was being closely monitored by mooring holders, to the very significant action for a last-minute vote to convert permits to licenses is extremely complicated and involves no real analysis and no meaningful stakeholder arrangement. Until the city can prove to this Commission and stakeholders that it can treat similar Tideland permit holders equitably for a period of time, we feel that the city should not be allowed to make a confusing pivot to mooring licenses that involves so many ramifications against the same mooring holders that have been discriminated against. Please require the city cease and desist any significant actions against the mooring permit holders until the existing breach of the granting statute and fiduciary duties are resolved for a substantial period of time. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you very much for your comment. Jeff, may we have the next public speaker? And I guess before we move on, just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Matt Dumlow. I will be filling in for the Lieutenant Governor for the remainder of today's meeting. Jeff, may we have the next speaker?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, our next speaker is Samantha McDonald, followed by Adam Leverens. Samantha, you're welcome to unmute yourself and speak.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Thank you for letting public comments occur on this special agenda or not agenda items. Last October, the State Lands Commission asked the city of Newport Beach to pause changes to boat moorings while the SLC investigated the city based on the ordinance that they passed that would eradicate homes and decimate the maritime community in Newport. I assume a pause could be reasonably interpreted as don't change any rules while you're being investigated. Despite this, the city has not stopped. The city proposed changes of the mooring alignment in February, which is not a pause. The recent Harbor Commission agenda in June and July looked at revising Title seventeen around the moorings. That is not a pause. The city keeps trying to change rules. This does not reflect the pause that the SLC publicly asserted over Newport Beach. Please make the city stop. They should not be making any changes until this investigation, its findings, and the subsequent discussion are complete. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. McDonald. Jeff, may we have the next speaker?
Yes, our next speaker is Adam Leverens, followed by David El Caskey, continuing the comment from earlier. Adam, you're welcome to unmute yourself and speak.
Hi, I had a couple people could call. And is my audio?
It's breaking up a little bit.
Is this any better?
Yes, that sounds good.
Okay, first, welcome Dr. Dumlow. Good to see you. Okay, first, welcome, Dr. Doomlaw. Good to see you up there. I hope you're looking forward to your appointment as executive officer. In Newport Beach in the last couple of months, two harbor commissioners have been appointed. There were four candidates for the positions, two of whom had lobbies. Mayor and council were encouraged that perhaps some attorneys on the harbor commission might result in better decisions coming up.
Adam, you're, you're breaking up.
Violation of the granting statutes, the discrimination. Right? And his application is up there before is I believe that our city owns and own the harbor. Many problems come from the persistence of that belief among the officials. If you could slide, please.
Adam, we're having a hard time hearing you. It's, it's breaking up quite a bit. Can you, can you hear us, Adam? At, Adam? Okay. Adam, I am so sorry to, to do this, but we, we unfortunately cannot hear you. Perhaps you can send the commission an email with your comments, and we'll make sure the Commissioners can, can get, you know, get your comments full. So I apologize that, that we have this technical difficulty here. But we do want to hear your comments, so please email us your comments. Jeff, may we have the, the next speaker?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, our next speaker is David L. Caskey, continuing comments on Ormond Beach. And that will be followed by Joan Tharp.
Thank you. Can I, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Okay, thanks again. I ask you to reject the lease at Ormond Beach Generating Station. For over 50 years, this plant's been sucking in ocean water to burn fossil fuels for electric power. It sits on a beautiful stretch of beach with the Santa Monica Mountains visible to the east and the Channel Islands visible to the south. After this plant was built, dirty industry followed. The worst being a metal smelter, which left behind a wetland filled with toxic slag. It's now a superfund site. The welfare of the people who lived near here has been ignored, but they've been steadfast and organized, especially the young people. And 20 years ago, they helped this same commission reject a liquefied natural gas terminal, a technology sometimes described as lighting a fuse for a burning planet. For almost as long, California's been trying to get rid of once-through cooling ocean water power plants. And eight years ago, the Energy Commission, along with the grid operator, determined that this plant wasn't needed, that peak power use could be met by renewables and storage. But it keeps going with temporary permits. And they're always conditioned on promises made to Oxnard for future funds to help tear it down someday. It needs to stop. This may be the last chance. Earlier, I spoke of capitulation and obedience to a hostile federal government. That applies to the Sable offshore oil production as well. And while your ability to do anything is probably limited, you must try. Oil production off the central coast is reckless, dangerous and unnecessary. Remember the young people who spoke before you. Don't wreck their future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, David. Jeff, may we have the next speaker?
Yes, Chair. Our next speaker is Joan Tharp, followed by Aurora Rugerio. Joan Tharp, you're welcome to unmute and speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Continuing my comments from earlier, my name is Joan Tharp, a Port Oneimi resident, speaking on behalf of the Surf Rider Foundation Ventura County. As, as I mentioned before, as Bill Hickman also mentioned, Surf Rider opposes once-through cooling systems like OBGS due to the harmful impact of marine ecosystems. I have been living and working and volunteering, recreating near and, and, and on, actually on Ormond Beach for over 30 years, not living there, but recreating and volunteering and walk it several times a week. I've seen the beauty that's out there, but I've also seen environmental damage, restricted access and pollution caused by industrial activity, the power plant, the superfund site. And also I've seen the community's tireless efforts to restore this vital wetland. You've had a number of youth speak over the last year about this lease extension, and I think it's high time that the commission do its job and reject the extension of the lease for the conduits. Again, we have an issue where the federal government is weakening state environmental protections. And earlier this month, and or actually last, well, yeah, this month, on July 4th, HR1 was passed by Congress, which includes a dramatically scaled back, scaling back of the tax credits for clean energy, which would continue our dependence on fossil fuels. My fear is if this lease is allowed to go through, then this plant will never be shut down until it falls down. California must stand firm in defending its coastline and communities. Please reject the amendment to extend lease 4196. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. Jeff, may we have the next speaker?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, our next speaker is Aurora Rugerio, followed by Juan Carlos Villagomez. Aurora, you're welcome to speak.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. I want to start by thanking Dr. Matthew Doomlaw for spending a day in community at the Energy Justice Tour in Oxnard. It was with great joy and pride having to share a little bit of Oxnard with you and just really emphasizing how meaningful it is to have representatives come to our home, to our place where we recreate, where we spend time with family and loved ones and talk about what does the future look like for energy. But I'm here to ask for more transparency from the commission. I understand that public comment section is limited to 30 minutes. But to be completely honest, one minute is not enough time. This is our one chance to speak with you and share our concerns around this issue. And having limited time to express our concerns is not equitable. This is our second time that we have a closed session, special meeting for the Ormond Beach Generating Station. But I want to ask who in that closed session has the community's best interests at heart? Who is advocating for us, especially when we are limited to one-minute public comments? Our community has been under attack by heavy ICE presence, and it is very clear that we are under unprecedented times. During unprecedented times, we ask for bold leaders that will stand with our community. If the state is not going to hold polluters accountable, that, then we expect the state to invest in the community by paying for proper dismantling and cleanup. Community members that elected many of the Commissioners into office are expecting that the same Commissioners that were voted into office stand with the community. This plan only turns on four times a year, but why is the state investing so much money on plants like this, the power plant, that is old, unreliable, instead of investing in clean energy and providing real solutions to communities like ours? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Aurora, and thank you very much for a wonderful tour. It was, it was great to see you in person and be with folks on the community and to see all the, that energy infrastructure firsthand. Thank you to all the members of CAUZ for that. Great. Jeff, may we have the next speaker, please?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, our next speaker is Juan Carlos Villagomez, followed by Jessica Vasquez. Juan Carlos, you're welcome to speak.
Hello, California State's Lands Commission. My name is Juan Carlos Villagomez. I'm 17 years old. I go to Oneimi High School, and I am with CAUZ. I'm here before you today to speak on the topic of the lease for the OBGS conduits. As a resident of Oxnard, I can tell you that the beach is a great staple of our community. It's a vital place for our citizens, a place for peace and to make cherished memories. So it was hard to hear that the Ormond Beach is under the threat from the Ormond Beach Generation Station. More specifically, its conduits. The conduits are a big factor in the power plant's outdated technology. They suck in water from the ocean to cool down the steam produced during the electricity generation. But with that, they suck in mass amounts of marine life, killing them when it happens, harming and killing off a large portion of an already fragile ecosystem each, each time it's turned on, all to potentially generate power in emergencies to other cities like Camarillo and Thousand Oaks, not even our own. But it doesn't end there. The conduits also discharge the water after its use, but now at high temperatures, which kills, which kills and harms even more marine life due to the thermal stress. All of this on an already heavily polluted and damaged ecosystem in a community that already faces so much environmental racism. But now you, Commissioners of the CSLC, can change this. You not only own the land that the conduit sit on, but you also have control of the future of lease 4196, the lease for the intake and discharge conduits. So I ask of you, us from CAUZ, ask of you. The entire community demands you to make the decision now, the final decision. Make it here in Oxnard for all, for all of us to see and reject that lease now to actually protect the land and waters you were appointed to maintain and be responsible for, to look past your wallets and take this step to help shut down this ancient, unreliable and obsolete power plant. Thank you.
Very much for your comments. Jeff, may we have the next speaker?
Thank you, Chair. The next speaker is Jessica Vasquez. Jessica, you are welcome to speak.
Hello, talking on the comment I made, I made earlier. Hello, California State's Lands Commission. My name is Jessica Vasquez. I am 15 years old and I am from Oxnard, California. I am here today to talk about the Ormond Beach Generating Station. This power plant was supposed to be removed in 2020, but no, it didn't. It was extended to 2023, but it is still here. And now it is extended to 2026. How long do we need to wait to have clean air? How long? I know this power plant is thrown on a few times, but it is still contributing to our health outcomes. This power plant is damaging our community. It is increasing the risk of illnesses such as asthma, cancer, heart disease and other health concerns for South Oxnard residents. This problem matters to me because it does not only affect me, but it affects all people living here in South Oxnard. There are babies who are born with breathing problems due to the exposure to air pollution that some people face during pregnancy. There are children and adults who are developing illnesses or redevelop them at a later time. I personally would love to go to the beach to have fun and spend time with my family, but guess what? We can't. The air quality is just so harmful for us. The worst part is the Oxnard is not being benefited from this power plant. We are only receiving the bad outcomes. We deserve clean air and access to the Ormond Beach. You, California State's Land Commission, are the people who are in charge of making this important decision. So please do your job. I'm here to ask you to please reject the lease amendment and host this final decision here in Oxnard, so our community who is impacted can be engaged during this important meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jessica. Jeff, may we have the next speaker?
Thank you, Chair. There are no hands raised for comment at this time.
Great. So seeing no one in the room, I believe that is it for public comment. Before we adjourn, do our Commissioners have anything they'd like to say? All right. Well, that concludes our meeting. We are adjourned.